Steve had also given us an opinion on that, so everybody should be up to date on what the request is. So I'd like to add that as E.
Letter E?
E.
Jody.
Jody, can you repeat what you're adding? We had... Can you hear it?
No, no, I can't hear it.
Okay, we had a vendor that does hot dog cart. Ask about coming into the park.
We'll get to that part, but we're just adding that to agenda right now. We'll explain everything when we get to that.
I'd also, um, the senior citizen report under F. Cause I'd like to ask that be put into the up above. So, under F, senior citizen report.
Under F, alright. I would like to move a letter C on our new business, um, right after, um, public comments. After adoption agenda, public comments will do before the public hearing. This gentleman has to get back to work. So if everybody agrees to that.
And I didn't know if anybody, if we wanted to add Apex to the agenda or not. It was given to us after the fact.
I don't have a problem if anybody wants to add it. Do you want to add it on our G? Apex?
Apex request for the assessing report.
Any other additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended agenda as requested with four changes.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Any public comment at this time? No public comment? Chief, our department do hire.
Good evening, everyone. First off, very much appreciate moving this item up on the agenda. As you know, I sent the entire board a copy of Mr. Placca's... I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Application for employment. Tim comes from us with 13 years prior experience with the New Haven Fire Department and works at MedStar Ambulance now full-time as a paramedic. And lives right in the village, right off the garage at Riverbrook. And has applied for a position with our department. He has gone through the oral interview process already with the command staff and passed with flying colors. And the command staff has recommended to me that I bring it to the board and request approval to pair Tim as a paid-on-call firefighter with our department. I asked him to be with us tonight in case there are any questions from any of the board members.
Any questions?
Um, just, uh, since you work full-time with MedStar, um, when are you available?
I work, uh, full-time with MedStar for 48 hours.
Hold on, sir.
Every six months, shifts change. I was already aware. I was told, uh, Chief O'Shea, when that happens. So, uh, I've been with MedStar for 13 years, so I'm a dedicated employee.
So sometimes you'd be available in the evening, other times you'd be available in the day?
Yeah, I live four days, four 12-hour days or four 12-hour nights. So I'm off during the day. And like I said, every six months, shifts change. And it'll be four new days. But regular work, it's 48 hours. Go from there.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you, um, coming to our department. I appreciate your interest in our department. It's the best of all.
Other questions? Chief, you recommend the hiring?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'm formally requesting the board allow me to hire Mr. Tim Placca as a paid-on-call firefighter with the Life Services Fire Department.
Thank you.
So, support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Abner. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing, 2013-2014 budget.
Actually, uh, can you hear me? It don't...
I don't hear you. Can you hear me? Two.
That's right, Chris.
Test. Working out? Nothing? They can barely... Oh, there it is. Okay. I don't, I'm not so sure that we should do this right now because mainly because I just received all the information for the budget on Thursday after business hours. I couldn't even talk to anybody to go over anything. I'm not positive of exactly what we're looking for for public hearing. I'm almost more comfortable tabling this until we, or can get together and go over some stuff so we understand exactly what we're looking at. I know that there was concerns by others just because it's such a short time to have looked at. I mean, we're talking over $2 million budget and basically one business day is all I've had to talk to anybody. I'm just nervous about doing anything with it without having to be able to go over it thoroughly. Again, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I agree. Too big of an item to look at it for one day. I did have time over the weekend, um, and as busy weekend as I had, I did try to look at a few things and I come up with questions myself that I wasn't comfortable with. So I think probably we're going to have to table this and get together and answer some of these questions because I'm not comfortable. Some of them were answered today. Jeanette and I talked in it, but there's still many things on here that I don't think are correct or I'm not comfortable with, so...
I think maybe when we get to the item on under new business, we can set up a special meeting and just sit down and go item by item and make sure all the numbers are correct and everybody feels comfortable with it. It's like I said, it's too big of an issue to just go, yeah, okay.
And I'm sure our audience here tonight doesn't want to listen to us chit-chatting about what's on here. We should have got this together and had it in line so that we had all our questions answered. I think that's what we're going to have to do, is set up a one-on-one meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the public hearing for the 2013-2014 budget. Attorney Jack?
Yes, uh, this part of the agenda is the part of the agenda to accept public comment concerning the budget. And I understand it's been noticed, uh, the public to be hearing to add the comments regarding the contents of the agenda. I recommend that the board proceed at least with the public comment portion of this. And then when you get down later on your agenda to, when it comes before the board is doing business, at that time, if the board wants to set up a special meeting, they'll just want to address those questions and perhaps add comments back there. That will be fine. So, in case anybody's here for the public hearing, must make comments.
But we still have to make a motion to open the public hearing first to allow that to happen and then proceed.
Yes, is that your normal practice of making a motion to open the public hearing? There is a motion on the floor, however.
I'll draw, I'll draw that motion. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2013-2014 budget. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public meeting opened at 7:44. Jeanette, did you get the copies out? Thank you. That's what was presented at the... Any questions?
Sir? I can indicate though that if members of the public would like to comment at this point, they certainly can. Am I not... If members of the public want to comment at this point, they certainly can. Well, the public hearing is open, but if there is a future special meeting, uh, there wouldn't be a public comment section of that meeting that the public could make comments at that time as well.
Absolutely.
So we're not prepared at this time, uh, whenever the special meeting occurs and you come back and do it again at that time.
Step to the podium, please. Yeah, maybe we, the board decided several months ago that they were eliminating the annual meeting. There is no more annual meeting. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the 2013-2014 budget, 7:47.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You? Approval minutes, 5/6/2013. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Abner. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mid-month business? There is none. Sheriff's report? Were you receiving a copy of the April report?
Uh, we received the March also, which is in April.
Any questions? Fire department report. Chief?
Just one other item tonight, and that's a, again, a big thank you from the entire board for your support for the fire department. And we got to show you what, Marty already laughed, but we got to show you what our, everybody's hard work, uh, came out to be. That was a 10-month project as well, where it'll be about another month before the engine's in service between training and putting all the equipment on and everything. Again, thank you for, to all five of you for the great support. And my monthly reports you all have for receiving file. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I would like to say that as someone that has driven the two originals, which were, what, 85 and 84?
Eighty-nine.
That's a Cadillac.
Yes.
Or better.
And we didn't buy the Cadillac. We bought the Chevy model.
Still very impressive.
Thank you.
EMS report? Mr. Wade is here.
He sent a message saying he was going to be a little ladies at City Bridge once more.
Come back to him. DPW report?
Uh, good evening. Uh, just want to touch on a few highlights of things that we've been working on over the month. First off, the LX1 PRB rehab project. We're getting very, very close to closing that project out. Just have a couple of small items for the electrical contractor that's doing the skater portion, a couple of little tweaks to the program, and that should wrap that up. Twenty-six mile road pump station. As you know, we're in the process of having that transferred over to us from the county. We have taken ownership of that station. We've done some work out there, kind of cleaning, um, setting it up. It'll work out better for us to maintain it on weekly basis. Again, that, uh, that thing, we're looking, a couple of small minor details to tie up when we go off and run it on that. As you can see, uh, the flower beds, we got on the launch, we got everything going. Worked out pretty well with the weather we've been having. Things are just going crazy. It's been, uh, quite a task just to even get the rest up lately with the rain and whatnot. Hopefully next week, I have playground launch orders, so we'll get another application to playground launch to build those areas backed up and let them back off. Yearly generator maintenance, because during the storm season of the year, uh, we'll be doing our rounds to get our generators up to snuff for the season. And then, as some of you may have seen, uh, the repair and the park pass started last Thursday. Our contractor had to do it with two visits, which he completed today. Hopefully tomorrow, we'll start doing some of the full patch work throughout. Other than that, normal month-to-month stuff, um, as you receive and follow the rest unless anybody has any questions.
The, uh, the mulch play area, just because I don't know, I'm just curious, it's a different kind of mulch than, is it like specially cleaned and...
It's actually a certified wood chip.
That's kind of...
It has to be a certain kind of wood, a certain sized chip, has to have certain compression and whatnot. Because of the liability reasons, it just falls in what it is out there. So yes, you have to buy certified playground.
I'm sure it's not cheap.
Depends where you buy it. Actually, this year, again, um, we're able to purchase 70 yards. At 70 yards to break point, we get a break on the per yard cost. We're actually splitting that load with New Haven. So New Haven's going to pick up half of it and we'll get the other half. So we're actually going to do the savings because we're sharing the load. I mean, roughly, uh, to kind of cap it, if you will, I think we're looking about $600 for wood chips.
Oh, it's not bad.
No. No, it's, uh, I believe I got it for $14 a yard and I got other prices as high as $26 a yard.
Glad you're out there shopping around.
So, yeah, quite a savings. It pays to keep contacts and call around.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Code enforcement report.
Control commission inspection, inspections were completed and filed in the clerk's office.
Hard made. I don't think your mic's on either. Hard needs to be slowed up.
Michigan liquor control commission inspection forms have been completed and they've been filed with the clerk's office.
Thank you. Assessing department report.
I have a question, um, being we have a new contract. Have we signed that contract and is there a copy for each of us board members? I haven't seen them.
I believe Mr. Jack has a copy of the contract at this time.
Uh, actually, I do not have a copy. At this time, I think we're...
Jeanette, did you scan and copy one to Mr. Jack yet? Thought it was done last week, actually. I'll be able to check. You know, proximity, Jeanette? Okay. Um, what I was told is for your review first.
So it hasn't been signed?
No.
Do we hold on to the check then or really have to pay them? I mean, there isn't a contract signed. What do we do?
But if it is for, it could be for services that were rendered prior to the termination of the prior contract. So if it's not, then I would recommend not paying that bill until the contract is signed. But if it's for services rendered before the last approval, then it will be appropriate.
Big forward on that, so...
And that answers the question. And I will check my emails when I get back to the office to see what it is and how I'll communicate with Jeanette.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Engineers report. Mr. Safe?
Uh, what's our question? Uh, I asked for a receipt file.
Any questions for Mr. Safe? Thank you, sir. Library report?
Library report was not received.
Thank you. Supervisor report. Um, just want to bring everybody to speed. I cemented, sent out an email. We did have a conference call with the Moochie Group. Their plans are still, or their intent is still to go forward. They are trying to finish up a major project this time. We're going to keep in constant communication with them and let everybody know exactly what's going on. Also, I got a chance to speak in front of the board of commissioners, myself and supervisor Albury from Washington Township regarding our coverage of our shared contract. I have not heard back from any of the county commissioners at this time, but they are well aware of what's going on. I have gotten feedback from the news story that has taken place from it and also was contacted again this last week by the Free Press for a follow-up story. They were asking if we've had any calls from any of the county commissioners, which has not taken place yet. So that's, that's still in the works of fighting for that. And just in case nobody has heard what has happened, we have communities that surround us or join us that do not pay for police protection. And in case of an emergency, cars respond from out of area ourselves and Washington Township. Sometimes our vehicles have to leave the area, but we pay a full contract for 24/7 coverage, uh, and now New Haven also too, where our cars can be taken from our area due to emergency situations. And my argument is if we're paying for 24/7, we better have a car 24/7 and not, uh, take care of the communities that aren't paying, uh, for service. So it's an ongoing battle. I can tell you that the leadership of those communities have tried to get a police village to cover, but they failed. And I can tell you that the sheriff takes us very serio-seriously. He is working with us by sending extra cars out when it does take place as fast as he can, uh, so that we don't suffer any loss. But he is being very truthful with us also and showing us the statistical data. He's not cooking the books to make it look right. He's giving us the real, the real skinny on what's happening and I appreciate that from him. So he's a better stand-up guy about it and trying to work out a problem and hopefully these other surrounding communities. If, it's, it's an issue that we really don't like to talk about in public because of these other communities jeopardizing their safety as well as ours. So it's an issue that, um, I won't be discussing a lot, but I can assure you I'm working on.
So are you saying that we have...
I can, I, I, sorry, I cannot hear you. Just up in my place. Thank you.
So you're saying if we have an emergency here and our cars are someplace else, they're going to send somebody to cover?
I'm, I'm saying right now, we have 24/7 police coverage that equates 4.2 deputies for around the clock. If there's an emergency call from the surrounding communities that do not have protection, um, they have a statutory duty that they have to provide emergency service. Our car could leave the area for that emergency situation. It would be backfilled by another joint area car as quick as possible to make sure that we're not wide open. But it is happening. They let us know that it's happening and we're trying to resolve the problems with other communities to fix this problem. If you, if you took our square, if you, the hardest part to understand is if you took the square miles of those communities and ours combined, it would equate to over 180 miles. And just imagine one car being available.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking. Are we still going to be covered?
Yeah, that's my argument, is that.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I'm going to put it bluntly, we damn better not be covered because we're paying for around-the-clock service. And I would, I would not want to explain to a family why we weren't, if a major incident happened. I can tell you the sheriff takes us very seriously.
Well, and I think the people in these other communities there take it seriously too, and vote their own villages and...
They voted it down. And I even, I was, I can tell you, it's not the leadership's fault in these other communities. They asked us to come to their communities and speak when this was taking place. I myself went up to Bruce Township and spoke in front of their residents. They declined it. That's not a core community.
No, they're not.
They could have spent their dollars on safety. They chose not to. But we've chose to spend our dollars on safety, so I have to make sure that it's, it's being fulfilled here. Just so everybody knows, and, um, the reports are still coming in, the statistical data. And we're going to keep working on it to see what's, what's going to take place. County commissioners are involved right now. We're going to see what, how they step up their plate with funds, hopefully to provide a car for those areas. But I'm still going to continue to work on it. We, we, we can't go without coverage. I mean, if something were to happen to one of our residents, how could we forgive ourselves? If we have the means to provide safety for them and we don't? Any other questions? Treasurer report.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Orders and bills?
Public changes, uh, one is the assessing administrative services check. The amount that was on those list originally was from the old contract. I caught it when I was doing the check, so, um, that was changed to the new amount.
What page was that on?
Number five.
Number five on the, that's a regular one.
Got it. And what was that changed to?
It was changed to, guess what? I didn't write that down.
Eight thousand, one, six, six, and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you. Eight thousand, one, six, six, and sixty-seven cents.
And I double-checked, um, as Steve said, what we were paying for, we were paying a bit before I did that, and we pay a bit. Uh, there was a couple of small bills that were taken out because they were already paid. And then there was also another one that was taken out because it was part of the statement. and then there was also another one that was taken out because it was part of the statement.
Now, Attorney Joppik, going back to that assessing, could the board take a vote and pass for a pay period to be paid pending the signing of the contract?
Yes, it could, in its discretion. I assume that would be sort of what we're going to have to pass.
Do you find that appropriate or no?
That would be appropriate if we hold it up.
So the new total, and this includes the reduced assessment administrative services, two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and ten cents.
Two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and ten cents. Thank you.
I do have a question on the third page, number seventy-two, unemployment. It was brought to my attention. Why are we paying unemployment to?
We are paid-as-you-go Township, so we don't pay a set amount. We only pay when we have people that actually utilize the unemployment.
But how did that person get it when she resigned?
This is actually, this is for two people. This is for Betty.
And Janette. I meant Janette, Deanna.
How did Deanna get unemployment?
Yeah, because was, did she resign?
Deanna got unemployment due to an unemployment hearing. The judge ruled in her favor for her to receive unemployment.
Is it, I don't know how they work. Is it a limited timeframe or how do they, how does the, what does the judge say or something like that? I don't know. With unemployment, is it, you know, unlimited timeframe that she gets to collect or what?
Talking to Betty last week, I think she said, what did she say? That she would be done collecting soon, and there was no extension.
But they've told her that a while back, and it did get extended. And now I understand sometime in June, I believe, unless they get another extension, Betty would be done. I'm not sure on Deanna's end of it, how that works. She got the same way.
I don't believe Deanna's collecting. Do you, Janette?
She got about approximately.
Can you, I can't hear you.
Thank you. Deanna got approximately twenty-two weeks, more or less, five or two weeks or so, but she did not ask for more, an extension. She just got the original amount and left it at that.
Twenty-two weeks, Susan?
Roughly.
She got twenty-two weeks and she quit prior to her, she got.
I'm sorry, you have a question to come up to the podium, please?
I've got a question.
Thank you, Janette.
My question is, Deanna went to court. I know a few people here went and spoke on her behalf, but the knowledge is she resigned before the assessing department was.
First, first, people were subpoenaed. Nobody spoke on her behalf. A judge held a hearing. People were questioned, and determination was found.
Okay, so that means that they were subpoenaed from this office, this building, or whoever they were. They, means they backed her up, but she resigned.
No, that's not true. Attorney Joppik, I don't know if you want to explain a subpoena.
If she resigned, how were you able to get unemployment?
Could you explain a subpoena term, please?
Well, certainly, the subpoena is a subpoena that is issued requiring people to show up. It's an order requiring you to show up and testify before, in this case, an administrative hearing, the judge.
I understand.
And the person is required to testify. The testimony is not necessarily in favor of or necessarily against the person who has brought the complaint. That's the subject of the hearing. It can be testimony that's adverse to that person. It could be testimony that is favorable. Both sides can subpoena people and require them to show up, and each side attempts to have testimony come in through that witness to favor their side of the case. So it's not necessarily in favor of, and it sounds, I don't know of this case, but it sounds as though the testimony was not necessarily in favor of the former employee. Perhaps some of it was, but ultimately, the judge, administrative law judge in this, in this case, from what I'm hearing, made a decision, a ruling, that this individual was to get unemployment for some period of time, and the township is bound to follow that ruling of the board.
Okay, that was my, okay, I understand, and I appreciate you explaining that because I've always thought that if you resign, you don't get unemployment, period. But apparently, this judge made a ruling through whatever knowledge she got during the court proceedings, and he judged in her favor.
Yes, you have. That's correct.
Well, thank you.
That's exactly what happened. The judge, based on the testimony, made a ruling in her favor to receive unemployment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just so everyone knows, this is only through the end of December, so there still will be more to come in this, in this fiscal year.
Well, and I believe too, if she did turn, I'm assuming maybe she went back to work or something, and just so we're aware, we could get more. When I got unemployment, and this was many years ago, things may have changed, this was probably fifteen years ago, I went back to work for a little while, not long enough that I collect unemployment from that, but then I got laid off from there, and I was able to go back to the original company. So even though she's not collecting right now, she may be able to come back if she doesn't work at the other job. I'm assuming if that's what she is. So just so we're aware, there could be more money going out that way too. I don't know if that's something we can possibly budget for, I mean, because we just don't know.
Well, Karen and I both knew that this should be coming at any point, and so it finally, I actually had to ask for it, but it's only through December, I guess the state issue is quite dark.
Anything else, Karen? No, that was it. I didn't, are we going to adjust that assess, assessing bill that, or what are we going to do with that? Because it's, yeah, that's what Jody said, you need to change it. It's not. Right, but we, Trumbull asked if it could be, we could pay them the full amount, was that the full?
That was a separate issue from this.
I think you're suggesting, can we go ahead and give them their check that we did?
What I suggest, I asked a question to Attorney Joppik, basically stating that if we want to pay them for the work that's been done until we ratify the contract, is that appropriate? He stated yes or no.
Right, so should this number be changed?
If you want to hold their check, then the number needs to be changed. If you agree with going ahead and paying them regardless of the contract not being signed, then the amount is the two sixty-one.
If I may, Mr. Supervisor. I think the question that I was answering was, can you approve the bills, including the assessor's bill, subject to the contract being approved and signed? Because the board has already approved their contract and awarded it, which is the matter of an attorney review, as I understood it.
Correct.
So if it proceeds through my attorney review, once I reviewed the copy of the contract and make any necessary changes to it on behalf of the contract, if it gets signed before your next meeting, you'll be able to release the check. But if not, then that check would be held. If you made a motion to approve the bills, subject to that contract being approved and signed.
But then we would go back to the thirteen. My feeling is if we give Mr. Joppik John this, the assessing office is going to want their check. Right. Janette gets that information if she hasn't already got it to him. He will look it over, give us the okay. It's not going to take a month to give us an okay. And then all he's got to do is say, hand them their check, and hand them their check.
I think what you're saying, though, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, is not correct, that amount would not change then, correct?
This is the amount for the new. We would not go back and give them the thirteen because that was part of the old contract.
Okay. I thought we were giving them less because some was for work done before and some was after the contract.
We paid for it, so this is the new amount.
All right, this is what it's going to be every, every month. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that because I think that's what the future.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I'll make a motion to approve the orders and bills at a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and ten cents, and assessing company will be paid provided the contract is approved and signed. Is that what you need?
Satisfactory review.
Yes.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? Attorney Clark, roll call, please.
Churchy? Aye. Boyd?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trumbull?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The only thing, Mr. Joppik, I just want to re-verify when you look at the contract, is that the thirty-day out is in there? That's my biggest concern.
Yes, thank you. I do have that note from the last meeting, and I will make sure that that's in there.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Go to the podium, please.
I'm a little confused about the numbers going out to the assessing department. Last month, there was, you agreed to three-year contract at ninety-eight thousand dollars, but here, when I look at this, proposed two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, it's a hundred and fifty-one, six, six hundred. And Jody just came up with a number. I don't know what's going on. I don't know what numbers were, what exactly are they getting?
They were getting thirteen thousand a month, and that included the field services that we paid in full on the last contract. So now it's ninety-eight thousand for just the assessing part, and if you take ninety-eight divided by twelve, it comes up to the eighty-one, sixty-six per month.
So what is this on this post two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, one fifty-one, six hundred? On the general budget, the general fund paper, under assessor, I'll make the number So you're sticking to the ninety-eight thousand dollars per year, correct?
Correct, that's your contract.
Gotcha. So what is this number?
The rest of it is legal fees and.
Extra for tax tribunals. It's budgeted for the whole department.
So that's extra hours budgeted in?
No, not extra hours. Extra services.
Okay, that's, that includes the other boards and the other.
Tax tribunal.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, okay, so that's what, that's included in the hundred and fifty-one, six hundred.
For Stephanie and things of that nature.
That's another fifty grand right there.
Right, no, it's including computers, it's including the appraisal services, legal, postage supplies, everything is in that along with their, their pay, the ninety-eight thousand.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up.
I only can do it, Dan, because we've been looking at it every day.
I was confused, I had to ask.
Trustees report. Trustee Churchy.
Just to let everybody know, at the planning commission level, the only thing we had was a sign was conditionally approved for waste management. And then the other thing we're working on at the planning commission is the rec plan, and we combine our ideas and.
Thank you.
Fed it to Pat, he's working on that. The only other thing I have is I'd like possibly the supervisor to check on this. About, probably four months ago, I sent an email out to everybody. It was about, it was two-part. Part, one part was about the training for planning commission and ZBA. Okay, we're still working on that. The second part was the Halloween display on twenty-eight garage. I don't, I'm not, I just need some questions answered. My question then was, when was that area going to be cleaned up after last year's displays? It's not to this day, and it's almost time for them to reset up. Is that company going to be required to come to the planning commission this year, or the board like the other Halloween display? This is something that I guess you can answer. You don't have to do it right now, but if you could look into it and find out. Like I said, I had gotten no response from any board member at the time why that area was not cleaned. I mean, the castle of death is still out there, all wood crates are out there, all the statues, scarecrows, everything. I don't know what was agreed upon.
Some.
Per number, you know, per item with the courts. And people ask me, you know, oh, I've seen that place, and I'm like, I'll ask. So if you could just give me some background information, when things are going to be done? Do they come back again, you know, for approval or what? So, thank you.
I would highly suggest too, if you have interaction with anybody in the community that does have a complaint, please have them fill out a complaint form.
It's not a complaint per se. You run into somebody in the store and they'll say, well, what's going on with there? How come that stuff's still out there? You know, it's, that's the way our community works. We run into people at gatherings. That's what they ask. They're not going to come down here and sign a complaint form, they're just asking me as a board member that should know what's going on out there. What kind of answer to give them?
I don't, I don't understand why you have to have a complaint in front of you when their, their consent agreement says that they will be cleaned up, everything will be out of sight by December first. Now somebody has to file a complaint, and it doesn't make sense. I mean, if they're not compliant, they're not compliant.
You're saying they're not compliant?
Absolutely. All the crates that you can see from garage is supposed to be out of sight. The signs that are by the road that are still right in front of the garage, it says right in their consent agreement that all signs will be out of view by December first. And I can go get the contract if you want, because I can give you a copy of it. It actually says by December first, all signs will be put out of view, and they're still sitting right on the garage at all. And there's even one that I think is illegal, it's, looks to be permanently, and the front post is in the ditch. And I don't know, I don't, you're saying, how do you get away with that? That doesn't even make sense to me. And I, it really bugs me that we have to have people come and file a complaint when you can look at the property and there's a violation. And yet you still want somebody to come and file a complaint. A violation is a violation, whether you have a complaint or not. So I agree, it definitely should be looked into. I, what I would like to see, and maybe Steve, you can, Mr. Joppik, you can comment on it, even though they have a consent agreement, if we go back and maybe for every day after December first that this place isn't cleaned up, give them a fine, just to motivate them to clean up. Or will we actually have to go back to court for that? That bright sun, you're in the spotlight now.
Well, in all honesty, I'm not familiar with the consent agreement. It was apparently put into place before I was put into place. And.
Me too.
I'd have to take a look at that, yes. So that's something if, if I'm asked, I would take a look into.
Please do. Please do.
Is that consent agreement?
Excuse me, can you go up to the podium, please?
Go.
Excuse me.
Just working on background. I should have sat closer today. Is that consent agreement public for public view?
It's public document. Deploy it if you like.
Okay.
I believe so. Is that correct, Mr. Joppik?
Again, I have not seen it. I, I, but I'm not aware of any agreement that would be a confidential agreement that is available by way, even if it's a court document.
So in plain English, it is?
I can't say that for sure without seeing it, but it would be highly unusual if it was not.
Janette, I was informed of that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Before I, 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 so yes, you can.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd.
Yeah, Steve, you, they were, the supervisor's office was going to send you the policy manual to review, and I was just wondering where we're at with that.
I don't think that is in my hands yet. I understood it was still being finalized.
Oh, no, we finished it three and a half weeks ago. Okay. Yeah, I received an email saying that it was coming to you. I was just wondering where we were with it.
I was informed that it was heading my way.
Okay.
I hope I didn't miss that email too. I hope I didn't miss that email, too.
And, and something else. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The, were you guys, something, were we going to set dates or something for the RFPs for the, this was on my desk here, but it wasn't.
Which copy are we ready to look at?
Do we want to set dates for it?
We can do that after the reports. We can add it if somebody wants to amend it. We didn't get it for an agenda.
Put on new, on new business, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can do that, I'd like to amend that if we can and add a...
Also, too, at any time, if you have any questions about anything that's supposed to go to the attorney, can contact myself. Ask me where it's at, I'll be happy to answer the question for you.
Sure. If I'd like to add the, going over the request or proposal, is H on new business?
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Turchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For.
File and receive. I'm sorry, take that back. Take that back. Motion reporter.
The only thing I have was the MTA sends out updates all the time on what's going on in, at the state level. And the firework legislation is being talked about, and there are a couple of bills out there that they're working on. And so I just wanted the public to know that we'll continue to watch what's going on at the state level so that the fire department and the planning commission, the planner and attorney Jopich can look into it once the state changes what they're going to do.
That's all you have?
Thank you.
And Mr. White is here in the back.
Mr. White.
I didn't even need work for the board other than, you know, the emails that I've sent in the last few days and weeks.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and file our report.
Support. Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Township office, north entrance, lack request.
When the company was here, one of the companies that was here looking over the audio system, I talked to him about the program that we use the doors, and he's going to give me a quote. I still don't have that, so that can just be tabled until I get a quote from that company.
Motion?
Making a motion, taking a motion to table.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting room sound system improvement proposal.
I gave everyone, or I sent it to the two quotes that are received from two other companies, Up and Above Premier Sound. Some of the stuff that they're asking or showing us are a little bit different than what Premier Sound had. So I really have wanted direction on where you want me to go with this. Should Premier be able to quote out the, the new, because the ones that we had them quote are over-the-head ones, so there wouldn't be any clipping into you or whatever. So I gave you all the quotes so that you could look at them and go through them, but I just want direction on where you want to go from here.
You're saying that these two companies are doing different microphones? So it's different, very different calls?
It could be.
Going to be hard to compare them?
Well, it'd be hard to compare them, and I didn't want to go back to Premier and say, okay, give us a, see, now I can go back with your direction. I can go back and say, okay, it's decided that maybe we want to do these over-the-head microphones as opposed to the clip-on ones. Change your quote to reflect that. Or anything else that's in these two?
I would suggest that. Might as well see it.
That's a, you know.
What's your, what's your recommendation?
I would like to go back to Premier Sound and not necessarily give them the quote.
Right, because I asked that we don't do that with theirs.
Well, but I can cover the amounts up.
Correct.
Or just let them know the different, is that really the only difference that you saw is in microphones?
Um, no, there was a couple of other things, too, so...
So, yeah, I like, I like the idea of crossing out the, the amounts.
Well, it defeats the purpose of going out for bid if you give them the numbers you can go against.
And that would, that would allow them to be competitive, you know?
I just, I'd like, you know, because these were probably one of the cheaper sets, and the over-the-head, I think, would help all of us, so then you wouldn't have to worry about the stuff we've had going on with these. So I'm just asking for direction to go back and talk to Premier Sound.
I like your recommendation.
Yeah, I agree.
We need a motion? I make a motion that we let Jody go to Premier Sound and so that we can compare office schedules.
And just to let everyone know, Premier Sound is still the least expensive of the three, so...
Support the motion. Motion by treasurer Ottenbacher, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Want to make a new meeting time?
I'd like to. Is Wednesday of this week good to have the first sit-down open meeting to go through with Wednesday?
This week is not good for me.
Pardon?
This week is not good for me. Well, available any day next week.
The only two days I can do next week, if we do it in the evening, and I know that's what works best for you, is the 10th and the 14th, which is Monday and Friday. Those are my two days off.
And I can't do Monday.
The 19th, which is a Wednesday, I can do. I know we're getting close to the next meeting again.
We just got right to this before the end of June.
Okay. Do the 19th, and if necessary, we'll pick a second date after that.
Should not be any for a second date, but I would recommend this, too. If anybody has any questions, have to review. Also, too, if we're going to do one final meeting to take care of this, I would advise that Paul Bailey be present in case anybody has any intricate questions regarding our finances. He has all the knowledge that we would need.
Well, I'd like to kind of wait on that because then we've got to pay him again for something. And this is something that is not supposed to have to come through, through there. It's supposed to come directly from the supervisor's office, and then we all go over it, approve it, and then go from there. So the 19th is fine for me. I can do as early as 6:00, unless you want to keep it at 7:00, 7:30, or whatever, so...
Well, it's going to take some time, so 6:00 might...
6:00.
6:00.
Then we can hash it.
What day is the 19th?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So we're saying 6:00 PM?
Yep.
Make a motion to set a special meeting of the board to work on the 2013, 2014 budget for Wednesday, June 19th at 6:00.
Support. Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by clerk Keith. And let me get this straight, this is just a meeting? Just special meeting?
Do you have to answer any questions? Go over things?
It's kind of like a workshop meeting to go over everything and approve it. And since it's, it'll be a full agenda, then we can approve it or disapprove it that night. So this needs to be posted.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at. This meeting, it could be approved. Yeah, is what you're saying.
All right, the public's welcome to comment, listen to us, and give their input.
That'll be fine. No, I'm sorry, you made that motion? Motion by trustee Turchi?
I support it.
Supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 2012, 2013 line item budget adjustment. We have the same time, but I don't need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we add that to the special meeting of 6:19 at 6:00 PM.
Or motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening. Evening. What we're looking to is go into the state code. Actually, it's less money coming in, but with the state, it's easier. If there's any questions or audit from the state comes in, you're using their fees. We'd be in a lot better shape legally. And this is a new state form that came out April 1st. And all their applications, we're going to accept all their applications and their fees. And then we're also going to update our own fees for like, the state doesn't cover pools and decks and ponds and signs, it's only compliance. So you have that there where we've changed. We haven't made a change in 17 years. So if there's any questions?
If you compare these to other townships, do you, I'm sure you talked with...
This is the state code. It's probably covered by 90% of the state.
No, the, the different increases you show on here, is this predominant like the area that has?
Well, probably most of them have changed their fees probably annually or something where we haven't done it in 17 years. And if you look at some of these, it doesn't even pay for the truck to go home.
No, but what I'm saying is we should be in line with, you know, our local area. I'm sure, I'm sure we're very low. So I kind, you know, like if you set the, you know, okay, you're leaving, you're saying ponds is 100, but what if in Ray or in Richmond Township, they're 200? Are we that low? Are we, you know, how much? Because we haven't changed them in 17 years.
Yes, we are, though. We have, we don't have them listed. I didn't get any of their fees again this time. We have discussed with several that are going to the state. They have not yet. This just came out April 1st. We like the idea, Bob and I, with our discussions, that all applications, all fees, everything is on the website. Our fees and our applications are not on our website now. We have to fax them, or they have to come in and get them. We've never completed that part of it. We like that idea. Any questions that come up, they can go immediately to the state and get answers. The code is on the state as well. It just seems to simplify the whole entire system to me. I'm hoping that you will agree. The website with the state is very well-run. People are easy to get a hold of. We like that idea. We think for the future, this is the way to go for us.
But anything that's not covered under the state, are we in line with...
We are.
Neighborhood communities?
We are.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to make sure of.
We are way below. We charge $45 for a pool. That doesn't even cover my salary or Bob's, let alone anything left for the township. We are way, way below. I can get those for you if you, if you feel like you need to have those. Everyone I talk to, our fees are lower. And I think the last year was 1996 when any of those were changed. A pond, a demolition, it's incredible. It doesn't cover even our wages, so...
Well, I'd like to make sure that we're not shortchanging ourselves, we're not over, we obviously are overcharging people.
Not with all the information that...
But we want to make sure we're not shortchanging the township either, because that's all the people, too.
Well, Bob goes to the Cenoyia meetings every month, and I go, too. We try to bring these things up with the all the other building officials as to what their fees are. We're always lower.
Isn't it dramatic? Low?
$25, $35. $35 for an inspection fee is incredibly low.
So you think these figures that you recommend, though, are closer to...
Yes, I do.
What they should be?
I do. Houses will be cheaper. Bob and I did some figures on those that'll be cheaper than what we're charging now off of the international fees. That's, that's the one we go by now. These are cheaper, actually. I talked to Steve Penovich, our mechanical and plumbing inspector, Robert Osterman, our electrical inspector. They're all in agreement that this is the absolute easiest and best way to go.
We're also taking their application forms, too. There, when I show you this, Karen, you'll love their application form as a planning commissioner.
Uh-huh.
I think originally, we probably set up our building applications and our mechanical and plumbing and electrical applications from the state. And then the inspectors, with advice from other boards back then, figured on the fees and figured out how much a syrup get, how much this, how much for inspection, this and that. A lot of those are much cheaper than our, than our fees are on our electrical permits. Well, Bob and I, and I agree with Bob, it's, it's very fair. The state fees are fair.
They're, they're lower than the international.
I know, I don't know if some of you have had a chance to look them over, but all through the packet or the, what we charge now and what the state fees are on plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. So we're hoping we'll go with that.
Make a motion to accept the building department fee schedule changes that's presented.
I'll support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions, discussion?
Ron? Should we put in there that we're using their application forms, too, besides a fee schedule?
I think that's a toss to determine. You want to change application forms at any time, I don't think that matters. It does determine traffic.
No, usually application forms are determined at a legislative level.
Thank you.
And it's on your proposal, and it'll give to us.
Okay. Any other questions, Bob?
No.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone want to speak to this? Sent to all the application, the email, Joe Babel, I'm looking for the company name, of CNJ Vending LLC, is requesting to sell hot dogs, barbecue, rats, pulled pork, beverages and snacks in our park. And so this is, she filled out the soliciting and vending permit and sent it in. It's normally something that we do just to keep on file. It's normally something that we do just to keep on file those people that are going door to door in the, in the township. I didn't feel comfortable just signing off on this one, this is our park and it's up to us whether or not we do this. This came up a few years back, I can't, we couldn't find it. It was denied by the board at that time. And so I'm just asking for her now, does the board feel this is something that we would want to let them do or, or not?
Where's this company from?
Columbus, Michigan. And then I did send it to Steve, so he wanted to speak to it.
Yes, well, a couple of things regarding it. First, what they applied for with the clerk's office was a soliciting vending permit. In this case, they would be vendors vending from a vehicle and the ordinance requires the township clerk's office to review the permit and grant the permit or deny the permit. That would be an administrative matter when it even come to the board. The reason that I think is being brought before the board is because, as Clerk Keith mentioned, this isn't a township park, it's township-owned property, it's run by the township. So in addition to getting that license or permit from the clerk's office, township or approval would be appropriate before anything like that happened. Essentially, what you have here is an individual or a company that would like to vend foodstuffs, you know, here is food, I can't, I don't know what their menu is, what they would have from that van, but they want permission to sell that in a township park. Those typically called are concessionaires in a community park or community property. In my experience, you either get a permit or you get an approval through an agreement to allow that to occur on property where you grant a person or company permission to be in the park and doing that in your park. And I passed along to the township a series of pieces of information that would be relevant to your decision-making in that regard, such as from the very basic, what's the name of the company, who's going to be in the truck vending, what sort of menu, what sort of foods and drinks are going to be vended from that truck, when will it be there, where will it be situated on the park property, where will it be parked, if it's not even carrying the traffic circulation in your parking lot, and things of that nature. I, maybe I'm being too expressive. And a series of, a series of issues that are relevant to your decision-making and including perhaps even criminal background checking, you have kids in the park and things of that nature that you want to be careful of. There are some strictures on how far you can go in doing that without permission, all sorts of things that you may want to look into.
Typically, there are forces and rules on them. Most of these are going to be after-hours situations, weekend, we're closed for business.
If I mean, one of, one of the things that I think you would include in an agreement granting permission to do this would be a provision that provided for addressing complaints. You have them spell out how they're going to address complaints that they receive and require them to notify the township of those complaints. Of course, you as township officials on a day-to-day basis may get these calls. People might call in on a Monday and make a complaint. Any enforcement or monitoring beyond that is in your discretion, but it would probably be after hours. But if you have some complaints, you may want to meet with them, discuss them, and do some more close monitoring than you were previously.
What is our liability, all of us, if we were to allow this?
That's, I'm glad you raised that. That's another thing I mentioned in my review report was that as part of the agreement, you'd require them to provide the insurance coverage that they have and also provide insurance coverage with the township as a name as an additional insurer under their insurance policy, so you're not incurring costs and you'll get some coverage from them. Also, an indemnification type of a provision that I would typically include in this type of an agreement. Would it eliminate the township from being named in a lawsuit if there is some sort of claim? No, but it would help protect the township if they did get named and protect the taxpayer funds.
Now, would this be like on a limited basis, say a yearly application or something? Because once, once like the soccer groups and the baseball groups realize that this is happening, they might want to have their own, you know, bring in somebody for fundraising. And then how do we say, oh no, we already have, you know, it's just, I don't know how that's handled.
Go ahead, attorney.
Just based on my experience, what you would want is to have the vendor propose to the township the dates that they propose to be there and the times that they propose to be there, and that would be what would be in the agreement as granting provision. You would have a beginning date for the overall contract. For your first year, you would probably be wanting to look at just a shorter period of time, six months or a year, depending on what the nature of the proposal is, see how it goes and have it renewed in the future. Oftentimes, the concessionaires or vendors will ask for automatic renewals so they don't have to come back every year. You might want to wait until you get the feel of how this works to be putting anything like that in the contract. But it could be in your discretion to allow it. A lot of times, they want to have a business plan from their standpoint that they know for a few years, if I do everything right, I'm going to get another year or two years and that, you know, I'll be able to do this so that they can have their business in place. If it does become an issue of conflicts, having a shorter time period for the overall contract, we hope you'd identify those and address them in the future years that you approve it if you do.
I guess my biggest concern is with the park. The soccer is about done for the year. You know, so having them enough that it makes it work this woman's while to come out. Because then the rest of the summer, we have one ball diamond that is getting used for, not anything permanent, it's not, you know, every Wednesday, there's a league out there or something like that. So what is going to be on the park is people using the pavilions and stuff, so do we really want? I'm just throwing that out there. I wish I could have found where we had and the reasons behind why we do have it.
And I would agree with you, I don't think there's actually enough, enough people here to make that work, number one. We, the township doesn't receive anything for this, other than possibly a headache, correct? Yes?
Again, that can be part of the proposal that they make. They could propose, and typically do in these types of agreements, propose either a percentage of their either net or their overall revenues that they will give to the township, and you have provisions that require them to display their books to prove what they sold and didn't sell and so on and so forth, subject to audits and so forth, or you charge a fee. You set an amount at, on a monthly basis or on a per-visit basis, a set amount that the township is going to be paying for the privilege of being here. And in future years, if other companies want to do it, they have to do something that is potentially fit. At this point, you don't have one.
Yeah, and Mr. Japich's email, he talked about that, about possibly, you know, they're paying us a fee or a percentage.
Were there any other communities around that she's still in this, Joe, did you ask? I would assume she probably does because she's fully licensed and insured, but I didn't ask that question and she didn't.
Almost like the old school ice cream truck type thing, going from area to area.
Have you seen the vehicle or anything?
That would be my next question, I mean, is this going to be out of a trunk? Out of the back of a stick-up truck? Or is it going to be a professional-looking catering-type truck? And because I agree, I bet you and I both said the same thing, you know, you're going to have people out here using the pavilions and, you know, I personally think we have a very nice park and we, there's people that have nice parks here and you want that big old vending truck there stinking it up and sometimes their stuff smells good when they're cooking, but not always, and, you know, when you look at the big picture, is it really worth it?
I think we need a little more information, really, and it's, like Jody said, it's getting into the, I mean, maybe for next year. Find out if there's other communities that do use it. I'd like to see, like you said, I'd like to see what they're going to bribe in here with.
But, you know, I mean, we, we do not have facilities out there, other than a port of body and stuff like that, a place to wash up. This is my major concern. You know, what I picture, I see them out there, I see a thousand napkins blown across our park, debris, and I really don't think we have enough people here yet for to support any type of business like that.
I agree.
Well, that was all in Steve's email too about, they want to know what, how they clean up, how they do this, how they do that. So it's something that we can look into and possibly this lady can apply to do it next year, you know, or some other companies might come and say, you know, we want to do this or we want to have this. But I would like to see maybe just fine-tune it, what we would allow.
Maybe just let her know where you need to move her, if you're going to, I know you probably want to tell her something, I understand.
If you make a formal motion to deny, and then I'll give back to her and say we need to see a business plan and, you know, if you put this, this, and this, and then come and talk to us early next year, so that it could be-
Make a motion.
I didn't want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny this request. I'm going to say for lack of information, that way it can still be open if she wants to come back next year. That's all good.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Senior Citizen Report.
Luanne's been giving us the newsletter and I just would like to have it be a part of, well, just even if I also, it's on, so-
I have a problem with that.
I propose making it number fifteen and moving the rest of them down after the library report. So I make a motion to insert the senior center newsletter as number fifteen under the library report in departmental.
Okay.
Support.
Do you want, actually, do you want senior center report or do you want, because you said senior center newsletter?
Report. I would change to report.
You know, the newsletter every month, so-
Basically the same as the-
It pretty much tells us what, what's going on. If she wants to add to it, we can tell her if she can add to it.
Actually, if we made an official report or asked her to, then we can get stuff out every month, where the money that we leave her, she can monthly put it in with that. Just kind of something to throw at her that might be.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Apex Request.
Karen, I think you can talk to this one, to this one, she brought it to her to see. I just didn't want to wait another one.
Yeah, and you know, I can't find it for me, but basically, assessing department is, yes, thank you. This is from Lisa Griffin, and she contacted Apex for an additional license, and she was able to obtain a discounted price for the additional license at four oh five. She has the quotes attached, but I, what I believe is they're lacking one of these programs on a computer that can be used daily. And it's software that typically, and I asked her if the other township purchases software, she said yes, and it becomes part of our equipment.
I might understand this would be for the new person that's coming in?
Yes, because we want an additional people here, that this would allow that person to do it.
Is this a yearly fee or?
It was originally five hundred and forty-five dollars, and she could obtain it for four oh five.
Is this a one-time purchase or is it a yearly fee on his license?
I'm being told it's one-time purchase, I don't know if you were told.
I think we've ever had to pay other than just the first time. There's two licenses that the township owns right now, this would be a third license for Christine.
Now, is this something that is absolutely necessary or, I mean, we didn't have it before, I mean, now, why do we need it?
Apex is a drawing, right? Is that my understanding, it's the drawing of the things that, and at this point, this new person could do this, get these drawings on in the field sheets and in the program and that, so, and I don't think we've ever paid an extra fee, I think this is a one-time. And normally, she would get it to us, we got it at five o'clock Thursday night, and I told her I wasn't sure we were going to be able to get it on here. But that new person is supposed to be starting, I believe, tomorrow, that she's bringing in. And that was my biggest thing with the assessing, my only complaint was that when they originally signed a contract, there would be someone in there, not just Christine at the come, there's someone in there doing the, and we haven't had that, Lisa hasn't been here every day like she said. So now this person they're bringing in, supposedly either he or she is going to be here every day, so there is a, a person there to answer the people's questions when they come in.
Well, why is there, if there's only one or two people, why is there a need for three licenses? I don't know how that works.
Three people here, Christine, Sessna's new person.
But full-time?
There's going to be three people here, it might not always be Christine, it might be this other person.
Correct.
But right now, because they got the kids out in the field doing all the field work and stuff, they're bringing in in droves. So she just wants three people being able to do the drawings to get it completed.
Still have a hard time understanding why we need an additional license. I, well, I don't know how assessing really works, so that's why I'm kind of asking you guys what.
Well, Sess and Christine are here every day, all day, correct? I mean, they're gravity, obviously, and then this third person is going to be here every day, all day also.
Basically comes down to this, Lisa said this is what she needs to do to perform the job.
Well, I understand that, but I also understand that we, you know, hired them to do the job.
Correct.
And now they've added extras later on, so that's why I'm just making sure that this is absolutely necessary.
What I'm told is it's actually not an extra, it's something that should have been in place, and can't believe that it wasn't in place.
Well, they should have noticed it a year ago, not now. You know, that's why I have a question again.
Well, that's because we're bringing a new, another person in. That's why it wasn't an issue a year ago. Sorry, pardon?
We already have one, don't we?
Two.
That Josephine?
Both count.
Okay.
We had a person before that was not allowed to use it.
Different management styles, that's all. Well, I understand that they've got the kids here for the summer and the more of this that they get done, the better. So I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the third license at four hundred and five dollars, it has a one-time fee. Support.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request for proposal? I have informed Attorney Joppick too, but I will, just for announcement purposes, for the engineering, I'm sorry, for the planning proposal, I am being told as of today that Mr. Mather will not submit a proposal. And on these, I guess we just need to know the dates. And on these, I guess we just need to know the dates.
What did you last time? Two weeks? After it was in the paper?
Why?
I'm sorry, pardon.
Why?
Why what?
Why won't he submit the proposal?
I'll have to let him speak to that.
Oh. Well, the earliest this could get in the paper would be, no. Sorry. I said the earliest this could get in the paper would be like the 19th anyway, correct? Yes. All right, so with that said, um. Oh, wait, Joel? I'm sorry. Possibly the 12th. She's saying possibly the 12th. I would say you need to give them at least a month to put their proposals together. So with that said, it would be like the 22nd of July.
Yeah, it's on the Monday.
Yeah, that's why I picked it, because it says Monday.
So where the red line is, July 22nd. I have the copies, I'm sorry, where the blank is.
Are we advertising in the McComb Daily?
When did we put it in last time?
Wherever you tell.
I believe the last time it was McComb Daily.
I don't think The Voice would do a whole lot of good. I mean, that's only if you go out to two communities.
Right. It was in The Voice one time. That's where the last one was published.
I think it would probably be better.
Carol, was it in the McComb Daily too or just The Voice? Oh, okay. Can we do The Voice one time and then the McComb Daily?
I would, myself personally, I wouldn't waste it on The Voice for this right now. I would go to larger newspapers.
How many times?
I think twice is more than adequate.
A particular day? A particular day of the week?
I mean, I, and I don't know if you want to rethink this, but actually, you could do it once. There's a list of certified planners. You can go right online, and why don't we just contact those, letting them know? I believe under the Michigan Planners Association, they have a list of probably more than a dozen, and probably only half of them are within sort of proximity of us. I would suggest one time in the paper and then contact those entities to see if they'd like to bid.
Yeah.
Okay, so McComb Daily we could do Thursday or Sunday. Those are their two big circulation dates.
I think Sunday's most likely.
So let's go for Sunday, June 9. Who's coming? Sunday is June 16. Let's do the 16th.
Sorry, change that, 16th?
Do the 16th. The next one gives them a month to get it in.
I'm sure, and, you know, I'm sure Patrick will talk to each one individually, but that's what he has told me at this time.
You need the date when they're available, Wednesday, what, on the second page.
I'm sorry, for all, when they commit to pick it up.
When are they available? The RFP documents will be available from the township clerk on Wednesday, date 2030.
I have a second page.
Probably the next one.
Oh, the second one is for the engineer.
All right.
Yeah, I have two, the same page, both for the engineer and not one for when the RFPs would be available.
Double copy. Do we have to have a date that they can come in, come into the standard, that they can come in and get them? Do we, do we have to set a date in it, the article, that they can come in and get the RFPs? If you look at the second page, it does say for the engineer, but if they want to come in and pick it up, what day is it going to be available?
Have to give them notice when they can pick it up.
So since it's going to be in on the 16th.
Are you talking, which, which one are you talking?
It says engineer, but do we have to do the same thing for the planner?
This is, this is all we had for the planner last time. This is all I found. One sheet. Was just a request for proposal. The other one actually involves qualifications, so it's not accurate for them. Two correct.
Are we doing both the same time or are we doing the engineer and then we're going to do the planner?
You're the planner.
The planner and then the engineer.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the second paragraph of the planner, it says proposals should include, and it says I think that should include, so they don't need to figure out.
Right.
Yeah. So we need to make a motion on that?
Well, let's go back now. That was on the planner.
Yes.
And so what was the decision at the end of that?
Once we're done with the planner, move on to the engineer. Here, that's just too much to try and tap all at the same time.
Make a motion?
Make a motion that the supervisor's office put in the McComb Daily RFPs. Oh, the clerk puts it on the paper, okay. That the clerk's office puts in the paper RFPs for the planner to be in the Monday. No, we said Monday, I agree.
Sunday.
Sunday, 16th, McComb Daily paper.
You want to also have, who's going to contact the planners, like my attention?
I said who's going to.
Sure, I'll be, I'll be in there.
And the supervisor's office email the planners.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? And I'm just going to go off of that Michigan Planners Association website that I pulled, I believe that's what they moved, also apply with the sheets and go from there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Man. Mary Beth Paisley Frost, Rowland Leonard's Township. First thing I want to say, the next thing is done. I see, I, first of all, I'd like to say perspective is everything. I see a lot of time, energy, money, and posturing, purposely, methodically dismantling the progress of the last five years. I see what occurred when I was still in office, people not talking to each other, things that could have been spoken to each other prior to a meeting. They don't need to be brought up when they could be taken care of with a phone call. I see the money being wasted in dismantling the planning department, the engineering department, chiseling away at the assessment department instead of allowing them to do their job. And they're available to talk to at any time. I, I just want you to understand what it sounds like when you're sitting out here. It's just constant chisel, chisel. The other thing I want to say on the good side is Ron, thank you for so doggedly pursuing this police protection issue. It's a big deal. The whole board should be working on it as a group very hard. Ron, you do it not only on township time, but you do it on your own time, and you've never given up. And I think it's paddling unfair that the townships around us are taking advantage. And once again, perception is everything. It is perceived that we can afford to pay for their police protection. That is not true. We are honor bound to provide it to our own residents, not to anyone else, but we are being forced to. And the residents of those communities know it, and I don't like it. But thank you for continuing to fight that fight.
Thank you. Public comment? Any others? Yes.
Vicki Newman-Frost, just a little comment. I publicly wanted to thank our EMS and our fire department. Jeff isn't here.
He is.
And he is. Oh, there you are. I just wanted to publicly thank them. The past year or so, I've had many occasions to call them when Carl was very, very ill. And I just want to say the compassion that these gentlemen showed when they came in, because many, many times Carl was very agitated and just not with the whole program sometime. They came in very calmly, the voice, the men took over and calmed him down, got him where he needed to be. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I will always support them, our EMS and our fire department. Anybody that ever does not want to contribute to that, shame on them. They deserve everything we can give them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No other public comment?
Motion? Make a motion to adjourn. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee attorney. Any other discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any adjournments?